Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for December 17th, 2019. Roll call please.
Vice Chair, the thing?
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Harmon?
Here.
Commissioner Biggsari? And there's a blank chair, so we won't call that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Harmon, will you please lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance?
At my allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A couple reminders, we have agendas and staff reports available by the door. Please silence your cellphones and take any calls outside. And now that our previous Chair, Linda Mason, is now elected to City Council, I will be the Acting Chair in her absence. And we'll start with the business items. Number one is the approval of the minutes from November 19th, 2019.
Through the Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the minutes of November 19th.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, thank you. And we'll move to public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? No? Okay, thank you. Moving on, do we have any announcements of conflict of interest tonight?
I believe I have a conflict on one of the projects we're considering, the 342 Angus.
Okay.
Because I live too close to it.
Okay, great. We'll let you leave the room when the time comes. Okay, thank you. And then we'll move on to the items for public hearing. Item 4A is 191 Fernwood Drive. May we please have the staff report?
Good evening, Commissioners, Michael Smith, Planning Department staff. The project before you tonight is 191 Fernwood Drive. This is a use permit request for a 50% expansion to an existing single-family home. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing rear shed located in the rear yard of this home to construct a 700-square-foot two-story addition and also excavate the existing crawl space at the basement level of the home to create another 370 square feet of habitable floor area, in total adding 1,070 square feet to the existing home. And this constitutes a 70% expansion to the home in floor area. If approved and constructed, this project would be a house with four bedrooms, three bathrooms, a two-car garage, and 2,570 square feet of gross floor area and 2,120 square feet of actual habitable space. The subject lot, in this case, is 12,200 square feet. It is much larger than most of the lots in this neighborhood. It is improved within an existing two-story, single-family home that has a two-car garage and accessory shed at the rear. This home was constructed in 1960. It has 1,050 square feet of habitable floor space and a 450-square-foot garage, two-car garage. And this home is also part of the Rollingwood Six neighborhood. The Architectural Review Committee reviewed this project at its November meeting and forwarded the project to the Planning Commission for approval with the recommendation to provide drip irrigation for the new front yard landscaping that is proposed. And also, there was a suggestion to consider unifying the rear elevation of the home by changing out some of the existing rear windows to match out the windows in the new addition. In response, the applicant has modified the project to include a new drip irrigation system for the new front landscape. The applicant did consider the suggestion to change out the windows, all the windows at the rear of the building, but in response, they did not change the project, but in response, they said that the windows, the existing rear windows on the home are actually in fairly good condition. They were replaced fairly recently, so they don't need to be modified. The proposed windows in the addition would match the existing windows that are on the back of the home, so they would be unified in appearance. They'll be the same color as well. And so, for those reasons, they didn't feel like it was necessary to then go out and change those windows over again that had already been replaced. And I don't think that was that clear maybe in the ARC meeting at that time. So, we did send out notices to the public for this project. We did not receive any public comment. So at this time, the staff is recommending that you do approve the project because we do feel that it meets the residential design guidelines. It is finished in materials that will match the existing building in appearance, even though it has a more modern vernacular. The addition is small relative to the size of the overall lot, which, as I said before, is much larger than the average lot in this neighborhood. And the project complies with all the zoning regulations as far as setbacks and FARs. And it also applies with the daylight plain requirement of the residential design guidelines. And the addition will be located at the rear of the building, so thereby preserving the existing houses as a kind of ranch appearance from the street. So this concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you. Commission, do we have any questions for staff?
No, just through the Chair, I'd just like to add that the windows at the back, they seem to be, from photographs and from drawings, that they seem to be in good condition, and they seem to match with the new proposed windows pretty good. I'm happy with that.
Okay. All right, thank you. We'll open the public hearing and invite the applicant or their representative to come to the podium and share a little bit about the project.
Hi, my name is Mark O'Toole, and I am, along with my wife, am the owner of the property on Fernwood Drive. We've been there for about six and a half years, and I have loved the area and really loved the view. And one of the main things we wanted to do was to preserve the view that we have. It kind of looks out over 280 and onto the bay and everything. It's just a lovely, lovely thing. And we decided to embark on this project because our family's growing. We had our daughter three years ago, and we have a son that was born five weeks ago. And so, the two bedrooms have quickly found occupants. But my parents live in Wisconsin, and they like to come out and visit every two to three months and stay for two to three weeks. So we're looking at additional space where they can stay in our house. And we also wanted, as they're getting older, they're in their 70s, we wanted to make it so there was easy access to that extra room downstairs, so they could kind of get in and out without too much trouble. And as we worked with our designers, we wanted to have kind of a flow of the house that, as Mr. Smith described, sort of maintain the outside appearance of the house, but allowed us to have more space inside for our growing family and to have kind of a big, great room on the main floor with a stairwell that allowed us to sort of be active and involved. Our kids are playing downstairs, we can hear and see what's going on relatively easily. Commissioner Mary Lou Johnson stopped by my house earlier today, and I kind of walked her through the space and showed her the crawl space area that's going to be that we were proposing to dig out and sort of the shed that we would tear down and kind of how that sort of all flows into the outside view of the place. Any questions? Or other clarifications you have?
I don't think I see any. No? Okay.
I was looking at the property, I mean, what a backyard. It's almost a shame it doesn't snow here, you could sled.
I know, right? It's pretty amazing, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, and we will, you can go ahead and have a seat, and we will open it up for public comment. Are there any members of the public who wanted to speak on this item? Okay, so we'll go ahead and close public comment, and we will bring it back for Commission discussion.
Through the Chair?
Yes.
I just want to comment that, first, thank you for allowing me to. You showed me very generously, more than I anticipated, so thank you for that. And just to acknowledge that the windows absolutely have no obstacles, they are in excellent condition and really should not be replaced. It's an undue burden from my perspective. It's important to know that there isn't any visibility from the neighbors at all, so it's a win-win project. And the view and the grounds are incredible to see, so I certainly am happy to support this project. There are no other comments, I'm happy to make a motion.
I was just going to thank you for adding the drip.
Welcome, yes. My vision always was to put in, draw, get rid of the giraffes and stuff like that because, you know, that's what we should be doing here. And so, I'm happy to put in the drip irrigation to make sure that they dry.
Great, great, thank you. Yeah?
Okay, no other motion? I would, one with a discussion, rather, I'd be happy to recommend that the Planning Commission approve use permit 19-025, based on the findings of facts 1 through 3 and conditions of approval 1 through 26.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the item has been approved, and there's a 10-day appeal period before any action or activity can begin. Okay, thank you so much, this is a great project.
Thanks.
And congratulations on your new one. I think she'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, you can direct them to Planning Staff.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay.
I think I need to step out of the room for the next item.
Thank you, Arus, we'll see you in a few. We'll move on to item 4B in just a moment. Okay, item 4B is for 342 Angus Avenue West. May we please have the staff report?
Good evening, everyone. The second project for tonight is 342 Angus Avenue. The request is for a conditional use permit to allow an addition on a substandard lot and to allow the addition onto an existing residence without a covered parking space. The subject lot is approximately 4,000 square feet and is rectangular in shape and is in the R2 district, and is improved with approximately 1,559 square feet of floor area within two units, referred to as Unit A and Unit B for this presentation. The project's scope includes expanding Unit B by 523 square feet, legalizing the existing 170-square-feet garage conversion within Unit A and legalizing the existing 582-square feet shed in the rear yard. Through reviewing the application, it was determined that the existing garage within Unit A was illegally converted into living space, and there was a shed constructed in the rear yard without building permits. So our staff has also incorporated these two into the scope of the use permit project. If approved and constructed, this would be a two-unit house where Unit A measures 687 square feet and Unit B measures 1,395 square feet. The total floor area, including both units, will be 2,082 square feet with overall lot coverage of 1772 square feet. The ARC reviewed the project in its November 14th meeting and found the project to meet the residential design guidelines and was found to be consistent with the neighborhood. And therefore, the ARC forwarded the project to Planning Commission for approval with the recommendation to reduce the curb cut width from 20 feet to 12 feet because there was a substandard driveway, and also to relocate the gas meter in the driveway to a safe spot or install a bollard around it. Since then, the applicant has incorporated both these recommendations and submitted a revised set of plans. So the new curb cut width would be 12 feet, which is a change from 20 feet. A use permit is required for substandard lots because it reviews and analyzes and determines the site setbacks for the proposed addition. Through this project, the applicant is proposing two feet setback from the face of the first story, and therefore, they are meeting the five-feet site setback requirements for the new addition for Unit B that's on the second floor. They have also proposed a transparent window on the east side facing the neighboring property. However, that is above eye level, and therefore, it was found that it would not have any privacy concerns with the neighboring properties. A use permit is also required to allow addition where there is no existing covered parking space. As I previously mentioned, the existing one covered parking space was illegally converted into a living space. The reason being for that could have been because the existing Unit A is around 500 square feet, which is quite a small living area, and to maximize that living area, that one-car garage would have been converted into living space. And although there is a shed in the rear yard, which is used by the property owner to park two cars, although they don't have a standard driveway, which is supposed to be 12 feet per the San Bruno Municipal Code, however, the rear yard, the rear shed is still being used to park two cars, which minimizes the parking concerns for this particular property, and therefore, staff supports this project. Overall, our staff is in support of the use permit requests and recommends Planning Commission to approve the project because the expansion would make a small home more functional for the residents. Further, the addition complies with both the zoning ordinance and residential design guidelines, and also, the applicant has incorporated both the recommendations from the ARC. And also, this proposed project would benefit the city and the surrounding neighborhood through investment in the property. Therefore, staff recommends Planning Commission to approve use permit 19015, based on findings 1 through 6 and conditions of approval 1 through 26. This concludes my staff presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. We also have with us the applicant, Mr. Hyun Kim, who would also be answering any questions if you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission, does anybody have a question for staff?
No.
Through the Chair. So was the unpermitted garage and the history of that discussed at the ARC? Did you guys talk about that in any detail about how that came about?
My recollection is that we discussed that it had been built without permits
Right.
And that it was going to be included and brought to code and permitted to make sure that it is safe and built properly.
The, so the new design, after the expansion, I have no problem at all with the building itself, it looks great, the design is in keeping with the neighborhood, you know, has all the proper setbacks and all that kind of stuff. The, the, there's, you know, obviously, if, I'm assuming it's a previous owner that converted the garage, I would assume. Is that? Okay. The, there's absolutely no way that would ever have been approved by the city because of the lack of parking in that neighborhood. You know, you live there, the parking is horrible. The, are there, so when this is done, there's going to be two off-street parking spaces still on the property? Is that what I took to understand?
Yeah.
So there is a shed that was constructed in the rear yard, and the applicant and owner uses that to park two cars. Staff is not able to consider that as conforming parking space because they do not have a standard driveway.
Right.
Driveway width, which is supposed to be 12 feet, however, because they have a remedy to park two cars in the rear shed, we are proposing to support this project.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Through the Chair. I think the house will look a lot better with the pitched or sloped roof on it, definitely. Just one suggestion, there's two small windows in what was, where the garage door was, and I think one window there of the same proportions as the one above it would look much more symmetric and look much better. It'll match up much better, it just looks out to me having the two small windows there. Just a suggestion.
Which elevation is this?
On the front elevation.
Having the two...
It's shown in the drawing, I don't think it's in the, it's not in the photograph.
I'm looking at the proposed elevations.
The front elevation, here. It just looks out, it'd look better if it matched up with that one in width.
Yeah. They're symmetrical.
And I think it'd be a better ambiance from the new bedroom, too.
I suppose we could ask the applicant, is there a reason that you had designed it with the two smaller windows and not one larger window?
Probably cost less money to have just one window rather than two. Yeah, I think it'd look much better.
I think that would be beneficial to the design as well if that would, if that's acceptable to the applicant? Yeah?
Through the Chair, if I may, just for clarification, this is Pala Wu, Planning and Housing Manager. Are we looking at the smaller windows on the bottom of the front?
Yeah, where the garage door was.
And what Commissioner Morgan is recommending is to consolidate the two into a bigger window.
One wider window to match the dimensions of the one above it.
Understood.
I think it'd just look more symmetric.
Okay. If there's no objection from the applicant, we can definitely amend into a condition.
I would be open to that. Any other opinions? Yeah, I think that's good as well, if we could add that, if we could amend that. That'd be okay? Thank you. Okay. Are there any other questions from the Commission?
If there's no other questions, I'd make a proposal through the Chair that we approve this application.
I have one last question, and then I'll entertain, I'll entertain a second. That's okay. I'm excited that we'll be changing the curb cut to have more curb space. And I was curious, Staff, if you could tell us whether, does that add a parking space on the street? Was that enough to add to the space? You can come and speak on the microphone. Oh!
Hi, my name is Hyun Kim, owner of the 342 Angus Avenue.
Yes, thank you.
The existing car is like, I didn't measure exactly, but the space is like, we can park the pickup truck, like a Takuma.
Okay.
So we extend it maybe eight feet, probably small car can park, so two, the small sedan can park.
Okay.
So probably, yeah.
Okay.
We can create maybe one more small car for the people parking over there.
Thank you, okay. Stay where you are, and then I'm going to ask Staff, did that, by the city standards, like technically add a parking, usable parking space?
I did not, I did not count that, but I believe one small car could park in that space. I can confirm that.
Through the Chair. It wouldn't get you to two official city sanctioned parking spaces, but it would get you to two practical parking spaces.
Okay, well, that's something.
Two small cars. One, if somebody parks a large Cadillac there, then you'll get another one.
Next to the power pole.
Oh, yeah.
We shrink the power driveway, and then make one car, not the big one, but small car can park.
Okay, thank you. And what I'm going to do right now, while you're here, is I'm going to open public comment and ask if you would like to share anything about the project.
This, we bought this house one year and two days ago, and now, we think it's an easy process, but we have to wait one year. We bought this property because we rejected from two attempts by house, and we buy house because we have to live with my mother-in-law and the sister-in-law. Now we live in separate two places, so we think it's wasting money, and okay, this time we buy the house, and then we buy that house, but first of all, we just asked the city estate, we can develop the house, and the city said, okay, but we found out it's R2 zone, so we need a used permit, so take one year. So hopefully, everything is going fine, and we can live together. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Through the Chair.
Yes?
I was out at your property today, and I, there was the apartment next to you.
Yeah.
And there isn't a fence between you and the apartment, and I saw a person pulling in, and they are parking behind the apartment. They got in very easy. It appeared to me that you had equal amount of space as well.
We are a little bit smaller than next to the apartment.
Yours, your driveway onto the left side, looking at the building?
Almost theirs is ours is the same, but our building is a bit tripsetbacked, so they have the, like, driveway is self-tamped, but they had the space, but ours is just building to building is tempered, so.
Yes.
But I have the big bend, but I can go easy, in and out easily.
I saw that there was opportunity for driving back and forth.
Yeah, yeah.
I know that there's a 12-foot, but what I observed was cars coming in and out pretty easy. I wasn't able, the fences were too tall for me. I make every effort to look in every crevice I possibly can, but they were much too tall. And the fences are in really good shape, and so I wasn't able to see in the back to see if there was ample parking towards the back. And then on the right side of the building, or the east side of the building, there was a fence also, but it was a gate.
Uh-huh.
It was gated.
Yeah.
And so, are you able to park beyond that gate in the back there? You're able to do so?
Yeah, we, now I have to go in and out because something stuck, I have to move around, so I open the gate and then drive backward. Maybe my drive is being good, but I don't know. She sometimes drive, but it's okay to, in and out.
And even though it's not the best, but there's enough room for three to four cars tandem, right?
Yeah.
Providing, there's, I don't know what's behind the gate, but there was at least two spots.
Two spot, and then one car just like, you can park the, behind the...
Behind the gate?
Yeah, gate.
Okay. That's what I was interested to know, how many you could put back there. Thank you.
You have to bring a ladder next time you work.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I'll open for public comment, if there are any members of the public who'd like to speak on the item. Okay, there are none, so we'll close public comment, and we'll bring the discussion back to the Commission.
I'd like to propose that we issue the permit on this project.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, no abstentions? Okay, so the item has been approved, and there's a 10-day appeal period before any action or activity can begin on the project. Any questions can be directed to Planning Staff. Thank you.
Good luck with the project.
Yes, good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Shall we go retrieve Arus? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, welcome back. The next item of business is 4C, that's 1150 El Camino Real, number 209. May we please have the staff report?
The next project for tonight is for Planet Fitness at shop 209 in the Tanforan Shopping Mall. The request is to authorize personal fitness or gym club use as, through a conditional use permit in a PD district. The subject site, shop 209 at Tanforan Mall, measures around 11,000 square feet and is located at the north side on the first floor of the Tanforan Mall. Specifically, the property is located between Old Navy and Petco retail stores. And the subject site has remained vacant and was previously occupied by Alta Beauty Store, which was a retail use. The project is categorically exempt under CEQA for existing facilities. Planet Fitness, a personal fitness used chain, plans to open a new location at the shops of Tanforan in the former Alta Beauty site. And the proposed project entails new signage, exterior facade upgrade that would reflect the corporate design, interior tenant improvements to match their use, and a request for planning commission to authorize personal fitness gym as a conditional use in the existing PD district. If approved, the facility will have an occupancy of over 600 patrons, which could significantly activate and generate higher customer foot traffic on the west side of the mall. This project was reviewed by the ARC in its November meeting and reviewed the project scope and approved the exterior facade improvements that are proposed by this project. The ARC approved this project with a recommendation to add awnings or to keep the awnings for the front and side elevations. Since then, the applicant has proposed to keep the awnings and submitted a revised set of elevations and plans. To give you a little background on the Tanforan Mall PD, it was approved through a PD approval in 1971 and was developed with a PD zoning district, which requires standards that are specific to the development plan that was approved that time. The Tanforan PD allows retail users, other commercial enterprises, theater, entertainment, and common facility areas, users in the common facility areas. However, the Tanforan PD did not specify the use of fitness users at that time when the PD was approved. Therefore, this proposal requires a conditional use permit because it consists of a use that was not specifically stated in the plan development permit. When the mall was established, users such as retail and restaurant were envisioned, but specific users such as personal fitness or exercise gym were not identified. The San Bruno Municipal Code allows or specifies any and all compatible land uses consistent with the general plan to be conditional users within a PD district. And those conditional users may be authorized and approved by the planning commission. And therefore, this project is before you tonight. To support this request, staff conducted some research on various uses, which are mid-sized exercise or gym fitness users, and found that similar gyms such as Planet Fitness itself, Crunch Fitness and, for example, Equinox Fitness are examples that have established facilities in the strip mall or standalone settings. However, these kind of uses have also started occupying spaces in larger malls or regional mall setting. Staff also found that at least 10 shopping malls in the region have personal fitness of this scale in the mall complex. These examples include Crunch Fitness at the Cerro Monte Center in Daly City, Planet Fitness at the New Park Mall in Newark, and Forty-Niners Fit at the West Gate Mall in Saratoga, to name a few, out of the 10. With the change in use from retail to gym, parking demand was also analyzed and it was calculated that the original retail use that was occupied by Alta required 46 parking spaces, whereas the change in use of the usable space for the Planet Fitness requires 36 parking spaces, which is 10 less than what a retail would have required. The calculation details are mentioned in the staff report on page five of this project. Staff finds that if planning commission authorizes a personal fitness gym or a gym use to be established at the shops at Tanforan, it will generate more customer foot traffic, leading to increased retail activities and will also bring more diversity to the mall users, at the same time not impacting the parking. Therefore, staff is supportive of the change in use and supports this project and recommends planning commission to authorize this use in the PD district based on findings one through three and conditions of approval one through nine. This concludes my staff presentation. Happy to answer any questions. We also have the applicant on behalf of Planet Fitness, Mr. Justin Zucker with us. He will also answer any questions from the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody on the commission have any questions for staff?
I have a question. So obviously, there's plenty of parking in. This is more of a curiosity for someone who visits Tanforan. The area, the parking area that's directly in front of the proposed location is always full, to the point that I believe that it's probably employees of the mall who park because it is 100% full and there's no turnover. Is there any kind of, any kind of rules that are put out by the mall to where, like as to where employees should park versus leaving spaces for patrons?
Through the chair, if I may, I am not aware of any special conditional restriction that's imposed by the mall management to ask their employees to park elsewhere. It is a good practice, I acknowledge that. As we were looking at the parking analysis for this project, the overall parking was kind of counted per building. So the entire mall is required to provide X amount of parking. I do wish that there probably should be distinction between guest parking versus employee parking versus customer parking. But we would have to check in with the mall management.
That's totally fine. And that, the answer to that question has no bearing on the decision for this because it's not, it's not the subject property's issue.
It is certainly a good recommendation.
But it would affect, you know, traffic in there. But the good news is people going to the gym probably don't mind walking a little farther.
Good point.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for staff? No, okay. Well, we'll move on to the public hearing. The applicant, would you, applicant, would you like to come to the podium and please share some about the project?
Good evening, commissioners. Justin Zucker from Ruben, Juni, and Rose here on behalf of the project sponsor. First off, I would like to thank planning staff, especially Ms. Dandy, for all of the work they've put into this project. We believe that a gym is good for this mall. As mentioned by staff, it will help increase foot traffic and is also consistent with the general plan intensifying land uses surrounding the El Camino Real corridor and San Bruno Bar Station. Tanforan Mall has approximately about 100 shops and this would be the first fitness center. And as such, this would not be injurious to the existing uses. In fact, it would likely complement those uses and it would increase the diversity of experiences, which would help advance establishing the shops at Tanforan as a first-class shopping and service center experience. As mentioned, parking is reduced from that of the previous retail use Alta, so we appreciate Commissioner Hamilton's comments about the guest versus employee parking. We're uncertain, as Ms. Wu had mentioned, uncertain of any restrictions to that, but happy to raise that issue with the landlord. But as mentioned, that's outside of our purview. That said, we're very excited about this project and concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
How long would you reckon the construction period would be on that?
My understanding is about six weeks for the interior build-out. And then we still have to do, get the signage permitted and get that approved. We have submitted the plans for the signage with the ARC packet and it is in your packet as well. But we would imagine that wouldn't take much longer, a few weeks afterwards. And we'd be excited to get this in there, given that the mall is, the retail industry and retail landscape is getting pretty scary and this would help alleviate some of that burden.
And so if the project is approved, when would you see it being open at this stage?
We would hope to have it as open as early as Q1 of 2020. We, our submission packet, we have, the drawings are, structural drawings are completed and we would be submitting them for building permit once the appeal period runs 10 days from today, assuming approval. So we would like to hit the ground running very quickly and get this up and up.
It'd be good to see the space being occupied and put to good use.
Agreed.
Commissioner?
Oh, yeah. Go ahead, Mary Lou.
I don't know if I just it was an oversight of my part, can you tell me the hours and the employees and what your plan is for scheduling and...
Hours would be from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And with regards to scheduling, I don't have these specifics on the scheduling. Happy to look into that if there is something more specific pertaining to the scheduling that you'd like further information on.
Okay. When I look at scheduling, I'm not looking for details of your day-to-day operation, but mostly your scheduling. I should have clarified that staffing, would you anticipate staffing to be at different times? Are they, are they, do you have full staff at a specific time, just sort of thinking about? I know we have ample parking, but wanting to think outside the box about it as well.
Given that it's a, we're hoping to attract both clientele that will be coming to and from work, I would envision that it would likely be higher staffed in the evening hours and the morning hours with a little bit of lower staffing during the mid portions of the day when most folks are at work or school or some other engagement.
It seems to me, though, if you're opening at 9:00 AM, most people are at work by that point, will remain at work. So your higher traffic would probably be the evening? Is that what you anticipate?
Yes.
So you're not catering to too much to the typical working crowd that has, goes to work 6:30, 7 o'clock, 8 o'clock in the morning? Starting at 1:00, it appears that you're catering to the later working schedule?
Generally speaking, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Harmon, did you have a question?
I did. I just want to be clear, I am definitely, this should not be taken as like a, you know, a threat of rejecting the design. But I did observe that it appears you have all of the lockers, all of the showers, all of the toilet facilities in gendered spaces and with the sort of growing community of trans and legally non-binary people in California. I mean, if it is a possibility to consider building, like, you know, one family restroom with a shower or something like that, I would, I would think it would be worth considering. Some progressive gyms now are designing themselves so that the lockers are in open space because, I mean, in those direct areas, you can be closed and then have single occupancy changing and that type of facility. And like I said, I'm not, I'm not thinking of like voting against this on that basis, but something to consider in your designs going forwards and if possible, to consider implementing here.
That's something we certainly can consider. And it's a good point, well-taken.
Okay, yeah, I've, I don't yet go to Planet Fitness, but I do attend a gym where they do have a gender-neutral bathroom with single, an independent shower, changing room, and locker space, which I find to be very beneficial. And it's also really helpful for families, too. Small children are not always welcome in locker rooms, although you don't have a childcare area. Am I, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about that.
As a father, I definitely understand it is very difficult navigating public facilities with a child that's not the same gender as you. I have a daughter.
Yes, yes. Did, is that something that you were going to take under, I guess this is more of a suggestion than a...
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, I understand there's a timeline to this. I don't feel like we need to set it as an absolute condition for this particular project, but...
So sorry, staff, what do we do with the suggestion? Is, we just send it away to...
We could, we could document in a minute that there was a recommendation made by Commissioner Harmon.
Okay. All right, thank you. So in that case, I guess I will, let's see. We will move along into the public comment. And I wanted to see if there are any members of the public who'd like to speak on the subject? Okay, there are none. Thank you. And we'll go ahead and close that and bring the discussion back to the commission. Is there any discussion or questions? I can entertain a motion if there is a motion.
Make a motion that we proceed and issue a permit on this proposal.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No abstentions and no, no nays? Okay, so thank you, this has been approved and there's a 10-day appeal period, as you know. And any questions can be directed to staff. Okay, thank you so much. You, too. All right, so moving on to item 4D. This is the commission review and recommendations for city council regarding the amendments to the San Bruno Municipal Code Title 12 and Article 3 zoning to rescind and replace Chapter 12, the off-street parking and loading, and to amend Chapters 12.92 and 12.96 and Parking Design Standards Resolution. May we please have a staff report?
Good evening, Honorable Chair and Member of Planning Commission. Again, my name is Pamela Wu. I am the Planning and Housing Manager with the city and I have the pleasure to provide you with the report for the city's parking regulation update. I'll be making this presentation along with city's lead consultant on this effort, Kelly Beggs from Good City Company. And also in attendance tonight from the project team are Darcey Smith, the Economic, Community and Economic Development Director, and Erin Aiken, Principal from Good City Company. Also, I would like to acknowledge other key city staff who have contributed to this work, including Haywon Ritchie, City Engineer, Michael Cato, Associate Engineer, Joanna Kwak, Associate Engineer, and Mark Zaffarano, City Attorney. The agenda for tonight's presentation will begin with the objective, followed by the background while we're doing the parking chapter, and followed with the ordinance overview and also the parking design standard resolution overview, and also your action and the next step following your action. And we'll wrap up our presentation with questions and answer. The objective before you tonight is to adopt a resolution recommending to city council for the ordinance amendment replacing San Bruno Municipal Code Chapter 12.100. That would be the off-street and loading, off-street parking and loading chapter, and also amending Chapter 12.92 and Chapter 12.96 and recommending the city council also adopting a draft resolution for the parking design resolutions. There are two separate attachments to your staff report and they detail the ordinance and also the technical design of the parking design itself. Now I'll turn the presentation over to Kelly and who will provide you with the background and also the overview of the ordinance.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. I'm Kelly Beggs, Associate Planner at with Good City Company, and I'm very pleased to bring the proposed... and I'm very pleased to bring the proposed ordinance to you tonight for review. I'd like to start by providing some background on the city of San Bruno's parking regulations. There's been no comprehensive update in decades, but parking is a major issue and a priority in the city. Parking policies and proposed regulations are included in the general plan, the downtown parking management plan, specific plans, which include the Transit Corridors Plan. City Council did provide staff with direction on revisions to the original TCP standards, which I'll talk about in the next slide. City Council indicated that they supported amending the TCP parking requirements to be more conservative in the near term. They had requested survey data of built TCP projects to inform the parking requirements and voice support for other parking demand and supply management solutions. The rationale for these revisions are as follows. First, the TCP is still in very early stages of build-out and implementation of some of the major parking management strategies has not yet been implemented. Second, parking utilization surveys of completed development projects in the TCP area are not yet available. Current data and observations in the city show that parking demand is very high, especially in residential areas. Last, the city has a goal to ensure the residential parking standards are consistent with those in state law. The overarching policy concern here is that inadequate parking and new development in the TCP area could negatively impact existing residential areas due to parking overflow. This slide shows the revised TCP parking standards requested by City Council for residential uses. As you can see, the revisions have increased the amount of parking required per residential unit based on the number of bedrooms. This requirement is consistent with state law, which is applicable to projects that include a certain amount of affordable housing units on-site. For non-residential uses, Council did support using the existing zoning code standards, but allowing tandem and mechanical parking, and also allowing a reduction with implementation of a TDM plan, a Transportation Demand Management Plan, and a Parking Management Plan. Council also did support potentially prohibiting unbundled parking, or, and that would be done as a condition of approval on a project-by-project basis. And that is to further prevent the concern of parking from new developments overflowing into existing residential areas. Next, with that context, I'll move on to presenting the principles, objectives, and regulations included in the proposed ordinance. The intent of the proposed ordinance is to provide clear, consistent, and updated parking standards that implement the direction of City Council, protect quality of life in the city of San Bruno, and facilitate economic investment in the city. The guiding policy principles for the new parking regulations include implementation of the city's adopted plans, including the 2015 housing element, and to be consistent with state law. I'll note that the State Department of Housing and Community of Development contacted the city in the spring, reminding staff that some housing element policies related to parking have not yet been implemented. So a key objective of this update is to implement those housing element policies. The policies and regulations in the ordinance have also been guided by council and community input. As summarized earlier in this presentation, the feedback staff received from City Council last winter regarding revised TCP standards are incorporated into the ordinance. Staff also held a community town hall to present on issues related to off-street parking in residential areas and increasing the supply, and feedback from that meeting is also incorporated into the ordinance. Now I'll move on to some specifics of the ordinance. As Pamela mentioned, the ordinance will amend and replace Municipal Code Chapter 12.100 and amend Chapters 12.92 and 12.96. The amendments to 12.92 and 12.96 are to resolve inconsistencies between the proposed ordinance and the existing code. The ordinance does apply to new construction, enlargement to existing buildings, and changes of land use in existing buildings. An important note on the scope of the ordinance is that it regulates off-street parking and loading, which means parking and loading located outside of the public right-of-way on private property. In this image, you can see a variety of parking arrangements. You can see that there's a wrapped parking garage, there's on-street parking, and there's also a surface parking lot. Of those three possibilities, the one that is not regulated is the on-street parking, as that is within a public right-of-way. The scope of the ordinance includes setting the minimum vehicle, motor, scooter, and bicycle parking spaces based on the land use associated with the, with those vehicles, as well as off-street vehicle loading. This slide reviews the objectives of the ordinance. The proposed ordinance includes organized and updated standards designed to be both resident and business-friendly. It includes regulation that aims to increase off-street parking for residential areas, revitalize the downtown, and implement policies of the city's long-range planning documents. I'll go through how the ordinance addresses each of these objectives in the following slides. To start, the ordinance has been designed to be both resident and business-supportive. The current code that you see today has over 50 different parking standards for various land uses, some of which are very outdated, meaning that they're not often proposed, things that SAF sees as new uses. In the proposed ordinance, the off-street parking ratios are assigned to 18 consolidated land use categories. And I'll provide examples of those on the following slide to show you a little bit more about what I mean. In addition, the ordinance includes strategies to increase single-family off-street parking, special provisions for specific plan areas, small business exemptions to encourage the establishment of businesses downtown, and it allows for flexible parking configurations, meaning tandem, mechanical, and automated parking, which would help us to maximize parking on constrained sites. One note for this commission is that there will be changes to how the ordinance treats additions to non-conforming single-family residential homes based on parking at the existing home. Currently, the applications receive a conditional use permit from the Planning Commission, and the proposed ordinance sets objective standards for how many square feet can be added to a non-conforming residence before they have to bring that parking into conformance. We do provide some flexibility in how they can provide it in terms of whether the space is covered or uncovered. And we also provide some interesting avenues to how you can provide uncovered parking, which I'll detail later in this presentation. This slide shows the required off-street parking for major land uses. As you can see, there's one category in the leftmost column, and it can cover multiple similar land uses. The number of required parking spaces is shown in the rightmost column and sets forth the number of parking spaces required per unit or per square foot of floor area. I'd also like to point out here that the multifamily and accessory dwelling unit parking has been revised and is consistent with state law. Next, I can show you some of the strategies that we've identified and included in the ordinance to help increase the supply of parking in residential areas. Many older homes in San Bruno cannot fit a modern vehicle into their existing garages and driveways, and these strategies aim to remedy that issue. The front setback reduction and garage depth reduction would allow property owners with non-conforming garages and driveway depths to bring one of those items into conformance to be able to fit a modern vehicle. The uncovered side yard parking exemption, that is currently allowed by the existing code and would continue in a similar form. And then front yard parking exceptions are introduced, which would allow you to increase the parking area in the front yard. That could be done either as shown in the image on this picture, by increasing the width of the driveway and parking two cars kind of perpendicular to the face of the home. Or it could also potentially be provided as an angled parking space if the front setback of the home is shallower. The front setback exceptions could only be granted if no widening of the driveway curb cut is needed or if there's no net loss of parking stalls on the property frontage from widening the driveway curb cut. And that is, of course, because we don't want to incidentally reduce the street parking supply. We want to increase the overall supply of parking in these neighborhoods. Here are some real-life examples of these strategies in action. On the top, you can, top left, you can see that there's just a widened driveway similar to the image shown in the previous slide. The top right, there's a widened driveway, but this one actually has no increase in the curb cut. And then the bottom two images show what a recessed garage door would look like. So next, I'll move on to regulations related to the economic revitalization objective. These include the parking in Luffy and the Central Business District's small business exemptions. The parking in Luffy is supported by multiple city planning documents, but it was most explicitly analyzed in the Downtown Parking Management Plan, which was adopted by City Council this past January. The purpose of the in-Luffy is to consolidate parking and fund a downtown garage, which would represent a major investment of around $20 million. The fee would apply to non-residential land uses located in specific plan areas, and property owners could pay a fee per space in lieu of providing off-street parking for up to 30% of the required spaces. The city's hired a consulting firm to study the amount of the in-Luffy, and the fee will be set by City Council resolution. An example of this project is detailed in the bottom left of this slide. And use of the in-Luffy in this instance would allow a property owner to reduce parking for the retail component of a mixed-use building from 17 to 12 spaces by paying a fee for five of the parking spaces. The fee cannot be used to reduce residential parking. That must be provided on-site. Next, I'll discuss the exemptions applicable to the Central Business District. So these exemptions apply to buildings constructed prior to 2005. And the reasoning for this is that property owners in these older buildings built prior to 2005 have paid into a parking assessment district. The assessment district funded the, the surface parking lots that you see downtown today, and it existed from the late 1980s to the mid 2000s about. So these parking, these properties have already paid into increasing the off-street parking supply downtown. The ordinance proposes a 2,500-square-foot exemption from the in-Luffy for these properties in the Central Business District. And then, secondly, the changes of use in the Central Business District would be covered by a change-of-use exemption. And no additional off-street parking would be required for the first 2,500 square feet of any change-of-use to more intensive use. And I know that this is a bit complex, so I will go into some examples of how this would work in real life. Next. So this is an example scenario number one, which is completely hypothetical and not related to any project that we've currently seen, but it, it could very well be a project that would come to the planning department. So in scenario one, a 2,000-square-foot barber shop is proposed to be converted into a coffee shop. The site in this hypothetical scenario has no existing off-street parking. As a personal service use, the barber shop would have been required to provide 13 parking spaces. As I've said, there are none existing. And for changes of use, applicants are not required to remedy existing parking deficiencies. They're only responsible for providing the incremental change. So the restaurant use would increase the parking requirement by one space, as shown in the bottom row of the table to the right. And so that is what they're required to provide for off-street parking. However, if this project were located in the Central Business District and built before 2005, no off-street parking would be required due to the exemption of the 2,500 square feet from the change-of-use. So one second example for you. So scenario two includes a 4,000-square-foot grocery store that's proposed to be converted to a fitness club. The site also has no existing off-street parking. As a retail sales and service use, the grocery store would have been required to provide 14 spaces. As we've discussed, the new applicant's not required to provide that existing deficiency. The exercise and health club would increase the parking requirement by two spaces, as shown on the table to the right in the middle. So that would be their off-street parking requirement. If the project was located in the CBD and built before 2005, only one off-street parking space would be required, as we're subtracting 2,500 square feet from the total floor area, which is why there's 1,500 analyzed in that kind of second scenario, third row from the bottom. So hopefully that helps to clarify that a little bit. So last objective, the ordinance implements the policies of the general plan, the TCP, and the housing element. As described before, the TCP policies are implemented with adjustments due to City Council direction. This slide lists key policies that the proposed ordinance would implement, and there's also a full list of relevant policies and attachment to, to your staff report. As described earlier, a key objective of this ordinance is to implement the housing element, and most specifically Program 3H of the housing element. And this ordinance implements Program 3H specifically by updating parking standards pursuant to state density bonus law requirements, and then also by allowing tandem parking spaces to satisfy requirements for residential and employee parking spaces citywide. Guest parking and customer parking are excluded from our allowance of tandem parking due to the obvious logistical issues that could occur. So the last item for this presentation is the resolution. The parking design standards have been separated into a resolution in order to facilitate standards that are kind of constantly updating due to technological and design innovation. Key features of the resolution. The resolution includes dimensions for parking spaces, for driveways, for aisles, and also design standards for items like lighting, surfacing, striping, and screening. It also specifies operational performance standards specific to mechanical and automated parking requirements. And you can see an example of a mechanical parking structure in the bottom right here. These structures are seeing widespread use in the Bay Area, and they provide added parking within a smaller footprint. So really, once again, helping to provide more parking in constrained spaces. The performance standards for mechanical and automated parking cover items like maintenance, inspection, availability of vehicles, to ensure that these structures are functioning at a similar level to traditional parking. So this slide covers the next steps. This will be presented to City Council in early 2020 for a study session. And then council will hold a public hearing to formally introduce and take action on the ordinance and the resolution. The goal is for this to be adopted by the City Council in early 2020 so that we ensure that we can report progress to HCD on the housing element implementation. So in conclusion, this is the action that you're requested to take tonight on this slide that Pamela has also covered. And I am available for questions, as is the rest of the staff here.
Thank you. I'll open it to the commission for any questions for staff. Who would like to begin? I know there are questions.
I'd be happy to.
All right. Commissioner Harmon?
And I did, I sent some questions ahead of time to staff, so I. One of the comments in the original staff packet that was concerning to me was around suggesting that we would be looking to prohibit unbundling. I noted that policy, the implementation policy, Trans E4 from the Transit Corridors Plan is not listed as implemented by this. This is the policy that says that we were going to encourage unbundling of parking, which is the idea that if you are renting space in an apartment, you know, traditionally you would pay $2,000 a month, and your one-bedroom apartment comes with a parking space. And instead, the company that you're renting from could say, well, you can pay us $1,800 for an apartment and $200 for a parking space. And then if they rent enough people who don't want parking spaces, they could then rent those spaces out to commuters or whatever else. And this creates a price signal to help encourage people to reduce car use. I still, I believe that what the voters voted for was a good idea, that this is a good policy. I don't really believe that the council has the authority to sort of countermand a policy adopted by two-thirds of the voters without going back to the voters to request an update on it. As far as I was able to tell, the ordinance does not directly address this issue. And so I am comfortable with the ordinance and with recommending its adoption. But I would like to sort of submit into the study session that, you know, yes, unbundling requires doing permit programs to ensure that you don't have an externality where somebody says, oh, I'm just not going to pay for a space, and then I'll go park my car in somebody's neighborhood. Like, that's clearly a problem. I think we all agree on that. But free parking is never free. Like, in the end, somebody is ending up paying the cost of it. And I think we should look to explicitly price parking so that the right people pay for it. And so I, if it is the, the sense of my fellow commissioners that this is the case, I would like to, in some way, indicate that as we move forward with this process.
Commissioner will certainly, will certainly include Commissioner Harmon's comment into the summary, which will forward on to City Council for consideration in the study session in January.
Thank you.
Is this a topic that we can take a vote on to see if there's, is there a consensus or is it just me?
I guess we could, we could definitely poll our commission here to see if there are any other strong feelings about the subject? Is that?
I, I can go.
Is that a friendly? Yeah, I'd be very interested to hear that.
Commissioner Harmon is.
Commissioner Harmon is correct that the main drawback to allowing unbundling is the idea that, using his example, that, "Well, maybe I'll just pay $1,800 a month and park in front of the building instead."
Yes.
So the difficulty with combining that with permit parking is that it is extremely difficult to have permit parking on a street and ban a building on that street from participating in the permits. So the effect of unbundling parking, it's quite easy for folks to decide to save money if they can just park in the neighborhood. Now, obviously, parking in somebody else's neighborhood, as you said in your example, that might, you know, be prohibited with permit parking. But in a practical sense, if I can find a spot a block away in my own neighborhood and save $200 on my rent, I might do that.
If I may, I mean, when you say it's difficult, I mean, in order to register for a long-term permit, I expect you're going to have to submit, you know, "I live at this address," to City Hall. It does not seem formally particularly difficult to say, you know, this newly constructed building, you know, residents whose return address is so-and-so don't get permits.
Because I have the permit, the residential parking permit program that was adopted is set up, unfortunately, so...
If you're aware of, if you're, could you clarify that? How would that work in practice? How is it set up?
So the, my understanding for the way that it was adopted is there's a whole process for putting together the, for establishing a permit zone in a particular neighborhood. And the staff would do a study and determine how many permits are allowed per unit. And then it would be up to the residents to decide to purchase those permits. And in general, the math works out to two per unit, and then they can choose to buy them or not.
But the point is that the permits are fundamentally tied to the housing unit. Like, you're going to have to identify what housing unit you are applying from.
Yes.
And so, in principle, you know, if you build something similar to Aperture or, you know, Mills Park, it was formally included in the conditions that were discussed for it. That if Mills Park, if the, if the single-family zone section of Mills Park adopted a program, the occupants of Mills Park Plaza would not be eligible.
Correct.
I, I, I mean, I, like, yes, it does require that we get the programs established. And I think growth of multifamily housing is going to put more of an incentive for people in the single-family areas to want to adopt. I mean, I definitely, you know, over in Bel Air, we already need it. I mean, we have, we have the issues with the Lyft drivers and so on.
Absolutely.
I do, like, I really, I'm really puzzled by the idea that it would be difficult to tie it to the housing unit when it's already required to be tied to the housing unit.
That wasn't what, that wasn't what I was trying to say, and I apologize if I, if that was the meaning that I conveyed. I guess what my point is here is that if there is a permit parking program in that neighborhood, then unbundling would probably be okay, because they would work together. Currently, there, this has just been established. There's no, there are no permit zones anywhere. I would, I would only be supportive of unbundling in neighborhoods where a permit parking program has been established.
Okay. Yeah, that is fair. I agree with that.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I support that concept as well. I have a question for Commissioner Harmon, just for understanding. When you talk about the Uber drivers, in my community, there are Uber drivers. But I'm just trying to understand your point of view. There is an overabundance of people parking, right, because they're Uber drivers and they have cars. But wouldn't that be their car anyway?
No. The issue we have in Bel Air is that we are so close to the airport that you will have people come and idle their cars there, waiting for calls to the airport. As well as, we have some people who it appears they are essentially using us as long-term airport parking, that they'll leave their car there, call Lyft, and as long as it's less than three days, they don't get ticketed.
I understand.
And if they do get ticketed, it's still cheaper than parking at the airport. They could get four tickets.
I understand. Thank you for that clarification.
In my neighborhood, I have a problem with, we have a problem with Uber drivers. Because I live about three-quarters of a mile from a large apartment building where there's not adequate parking. And there are teams of Uber drivers who share that apartment and sleep in shifts. So they'll have, you know, six cars for a two-unit. And they actually drive each other up to my neighborhood to leave their cars in my neighborhood.
Thank you for, for sharing that. So I guess we should probably add to the comments about the connection between unbundling and the residential parking permit plans, and that the relationship between the two perhaps is something to consider.
Okay. Will do.
Okay. Does that sound good to my commissioners?
Absolutely.
Agreed. Sure.
Okay. Very good. Are there any other questions or points of discussion for staff?
I have several, so I'll go last.
Would anybody like to go first?
Or I can go first. Okay.
I mean, I guess my, my other comment was in relation to the 30% reduction requirement. I mean, I think, at least my own vision and my understanding of the vision of our Central Business District that's been articulated is that, I mean, it's going to be something somewhat more similar to a downtown San Mateo with somewhat taller buildings, mixed use. I would expect that in the long run, if we were going to redevelop a parcel kind of right in the middle of San Mateo Avenue, that we would not expect, really, any new parking to go in with that. That the, essentially, the parking would be provided for that by the eventual garage. And I understand, of course, that's a long-term issue. The garage does not exist yet. But I did wonder if we wanted to formally state an intention to be on a glide path to having, you know, limited parking, disability parking, pickup drop-off along the frontage, but any additional parking related to intensifying the overall amount of floor space, particularly because we're going to build more stories there, that the sort of additional retail and restaurant traffic would, you know, we have a goal that that's going to be provisioned out of one garage or perhaps one at each end of the strip. And that this 30% reduction for the Central Business District should escalate over time.
I think that you're correct, that the intent of the 30% cap is recognizing that that $20 million garage is probably a bit in the distance, and we do want to ensure that there's adequate parking supply in downtown in the interim. But I believe that that is something that could be revisited as we get further along the road towards constructing the garage.
One of my questions actually was about that, so hopefully, can I ask that one? So this is regarding the in-lu fee, replacing up to 30%. You mentioned that it's going to be up to council to set what that fee would be.
Yes, correct.
Just based on other cities, and, I mean, just a ballpark, I mean, it's not a buck, and it's not a million bucks. I don't know where it is in between there, where, just to get a sense of what a, what a in-lu fee for those five spaces, for example, in the example that you gave.
Sure. Aaron Ackman with Good City Company. It's going to range, and it's going to be dependent upon the area of town. For example, where land prices are higher, let's say in the Bay Hill area, you're probably going to have an escalated parking in-lu fee. Downtown, where property value haven't caught up yet, you'll probably have a lower one. Around the Bay Area, you probably see a range of anywhere from $5,000 to $50,000 per space, somewhere around there. So it'll be somewhere in between.
So it depends on the... Okay, thank you. Welcome back to San Bernardino.
Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I noticed the comment in there that residential parking was for passenger vehicles only. And would that exclude somebody parking a pickup truck in their driveway?
Could you clarify which section of the code you're referring to?
I can't, I couldn't find it again. It's quite a long document. But I just noticed the comment in there that residential parking should be confined to passenger vehicles only. And I'm wondering if, you know, people can still park a pickup truck, as lots of people use them for work, in their driveways.
Right. So I think what we're, meaning that in a driveway would be a non-commercial vehicle. So not a school bus or a large truck.
Large truck or a school bus?
Not like a heavy-duty vehicle versus a light-duty vehicle, if that distinction clarifies.
Yeah, okay.
And then I know that there is additional regulation related to passenger vehicles for the mechanical in the resolution. And that, that is, I think, has to do with the limitations of what a mechanical parking lift can lift.
Okay. Thank you.
So shall we return to the list of questions?
Sure. It's not that long.
Okay.
So I want to focus on the, on the downtown portion of the presentation. I'm thrilled at these changes. They're really going to help downtown. I'm curious as to how this will impact some of our existing businesses that are struggling because of the current regulations. So, for example, Atlas Pizza has a large footprint and are constrained artificially by the city and the current ordinances into a tiny corner of their space, and they can't use the rest. So given that now the first 2,500 square feet is exempt, will they be able to move some walls and get a little bigger now if this passes? In theory, I understand. We can't, we're not making any specific promises.
I'm glad you brought it up. That's exactly what we talked about before we came tonight, Atlas Pizza. So in theory, yes, they have a big footprint. They will be able to take 2,500 square feet off their existing building. As you know, they are limited to a very small portion of the front. So without increasing what require, supplying any parking, they could potentially add up another 2,500 square feet onto their existing business. If they want, they also could do the 30% in-lu fee, based on however calculation that comes out, and then based on their economic responsibility, whether or not they can afford it. So that is another option. When we're looking at downtown, we realize that most of the merchants in the downtown on the avenue is around 2,000 to 3,000 square feet-ish. So we figured a 2,500 square feet exemption is really going to benefit most of the merchants. There are Atlas Pizza out there. There are merchants that has a little bit bigger footprint. So we thought with the 2,500 square feet and the way with the new parking calculation, and also the in-lu fee, we should be able, not helping everyone out, but a majority of the downtown merchants.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner, may I jump in on the Atlas Pizza topic?
Sure.
I was trying to think creatively about the exact same, about Atlas Pizza as well. In theory, if there were a, an Atlas Pizza, let's say, who, they were able to take advantage of some of these benefits to the new plan. But let's say that they still had a good portion of their, of their business that they could not use for, like, the higher-impact parking requirements. Could they theoretically break their, their floor space in half and perhaps, let's say, have a, have a use that would be a lower parking require, have a lower parking requirement, like perhaps storage or a commercial kitchen? Is that something that can be done on one property?
So you're not suggesting adding another tenant, right? You're suggesting how we should be calculating the area?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't know my own question.
So to answer it kind of in line with that question, as I mentioned, that we are calculating parking slightly. Right now, the current parking code would take the entire space and divide it up by a number of square footage per space. The parking amendment would actually only calculate what we call public space. So only dining area or space that's dedicated to that use. For instance, storage area, possibly other administrative support area would not be calculated, calculated to support parking. So in a way, we are providing a little bit more relief for parking, especially for the downtown merchants. So the second part of my answer is, I, we have not entertained of if there's a large space, whether or not we could split up or allowing another tenant. We, I don't think we have entertained that option yet.
Okay. Through the chair? Yes? Oh, go ahead.
I have one more thing to that. Another policy option that the council will have, and eventually the planning commission will be able to consider, is scaling the in-lu fee. So you may have situations for conversions where you could set that in-lu fee lower so that it won't be as much of an impact to that business owner as it would new construction.
Sure.
So that Atlas Pizza situation wouldn't hit that business owner as hard.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
And Mary Lou?
Yeah. I just want to be sure that I understood Commissioner Lethine's comment. Requesting or suggesting or anything that might reduce the fees to a small business owner certainly could be a good opportunity. However, most businesses on San Bernardino Avenue are built upon volume. So be sure that we think about that any time it might be reduced, because they could possibly get an opportunity, would be great. But, but if business picks up, volume will come in, regardless whether it's retail, purchasing items, or whether it's, whatever it is. But most businesses, I believe, on San Bernardino Avenue are based upon, anything that was volume would be really embraced by, by the merchants, right? So it's important to sort of think about what that would, what that would do if we implement that sort of incentive.
Right.
What's the other side of that?
Understood. We'll certainly take that into consideration.
Okay.
So what, and if this was, if this was in one of your examples, I apologize. A lot of numbers went by. What is the, how many square feet per customer is allotted for a, as far as using the calculation for a restaurant?
For a restaurant use, it's one space per 100 square feet of public floor area. And public floor area means areas that are open to customers and to the general public.
So one space for every 100 square feet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And then, this is the same, this is the same question, but looking at another business downtown. And this was a proposed business that was denied. This is the large restaurant that was previously denied in the Aperture. So is the, would these new guidelines allow that, that use case? Because that, that particular building has no parking at all. And was, I have to say, put through before I joined.
I will just point out that the applicability section, which is 12.100.020, does contain a provision that covers conflicts with previous entitlements. And the, the short story of that is that if there's a previous decision that's been made on a project, they would need to apply for a new entitlement.
And I just realized that that was built after 2005, so...
That's also, yes.
That's really the biggest one, so, thank you. Thank you for guiding me to my ears. Okay, thank you. I think that's it. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions for staff? I'm going to open it to public comment in just a minute, but I do have a couple, a couple questions, but let me gather my thoughts for a moment here. My very good, my, my partners here have asked some very good questions, so clarified some for me.
I can ask a quick one. She's, she's together. You mentioned that, like, storage is not, is not considered in a restaurant.
And this is unique to a restaurant situation.
Okay.
So storage and kitchen, like, back-of-house operation areas are not included.
So it's the, the floor space that the customers...
Exactly. So we're trying to regulate the floor area that's really generating parking demand.
That's great. I'm so happy about this whole thing. Thank you.
I was going to ask for context, going back to the residential requirements. I know that, or, correct me if I'm wrong, it sounded as though Stafford had put forward a proposal and that city council had asked for more conservative numbers. Or is that, was that more geared towards the transit corridor and the Central Business District?
That's for the transit corridor plan. So the transit corridor plan outlines lower required parking ratios. And this was brought to city council in May of 2018 for implementation, and city council provided direction to staff that they were not comfortable implementing those standards.
Okay. Okay. And then coming back to the residential neighborhood, I, I live in a neighborhood where most of our homes are small... most of our homes are small by, by today's standards for, for families. And we also often have substandard garages. We've had some cases recently come before us where we've granted conditional use permits that have not required additional parking be added, however, we've allowed them to add living space. And I know that for a lot of, for a lot of residents of San Bruno, they would really like to be able to add onto their homes to accommodate larger families. And I, I'm excited by the, the new options that have been put forward to adding parking into front yard areas, but what I am curious about is, it's let's say that we have a proposal for, for a home that just, we just had one where there was just no way that they could add any further off-street parking and they had a substandard garage. And I'm just curious if, if we still will be able to make exceptions or if we could also still grant conditional use permits or are they just stuck?
So they, there are more specific provisions for adding on to single-family homes that don't provide conforming off-street parking. And there is a cap of 250 square feet to be added to a home with no parking whatsoever, at which case they have to provide the required parking, but we do allow one of the spaces to be uncovered. There's also new options, the tandem parking will also help single-family residential homeowners because we can do a tandem garage now, which would not require that double-wide 20-foot garage, so that could be helpful. There's also a parking compliance permit that this introduces that they could apply for if they were in that kind of stuck situation where they really couldn't add the desired square footage.
Okay, yeah, thank you for clarifying. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't a complete cutoff and that there still would simply be some discretion that.
Yes, I think that the, the limits have been made to recognize that residential districts are really lacking the necessary parking and there is such a crunch to street parking while trying to balance the needs of homeowners and let them add to their properties.
Good, yeah, that's flexibility, which I'm, which I'm glad to hear is built into this, so thank you for that. Oh, there was a question, and I honestly, I couldn't tell you where it was, it was in my scratch, but there was the, I think it was in the trans-e-i of the TCP, and it mentioned pooling private and public spaces, and I didn't know what that exactly meant, and I was wondering if you could clarify.
Just one moment while I look into the policy.
Yeah, thank you, I don't know where I found it.
I actually have the transit corridor plan in front of me, if you'd like a read on that policy. Yeah, I mean, this is actually going to my earlier comment about the garage. It's the park, park one place, visit everything.
Yes.
So I believe you're, you're pointing to the park once and walk policy?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think that's the, that's one of the ideas behind the in-lug fee overall is that over time, once we build a garage downtown, there'll be less need to build parking on individual sites downtown so that people could park once in the garage and then walk to their, you know, go to the coffee shop and go to dinner, see a movie and go to dinner, so you don't have to skip parking spaces in the downtown area.
Okay, so this really relates to the parking garage and not to, okay, I was imagining gathering up little tiny bits of parking spaces and making a magical web of parking spaces.
No, no, just about customers having a convenient way to walk all the way downtown and have one place to go and park.
That's very convenient, thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Just one last question, I think it's last. What about merchants towards, especially towards the end of San Mateo Avenue, for instance, the new restaurant, J.C. Bruno's, who have zero parking? You have to really scramble to find a spot and it's a really lovely place to attend. And so how, how do they play into all this? Those, those, they have zero frontage sides? Right, and I think, excuse me, I also think that the old Don Picco's was sort of in that same situation. They tried creatively to do a few things, but it didn't pan out.
Yeah, I mean, as Darcy was, was just pointing out, I mean, that's another situation where you eventually want to get a downtown garage and then what you want to do is connect it through some type of wayfinding signage, you know, either a digital wayfinding signage that tells you, hey, there's 50 spots this way, 20 spots this way and gets customers easily to and from where they are, but you basically just try to make the parking as convenient as possible. But really, step one to that is have the adequate parking supply downtown and have the money to support building that adequate parking supply.
Have you, and this is completely off the, off the topic here, but have you observed parking lots in Australia? They have parking lots that when you are driving along the side, you can look down and see all the little red ones that are taken, the greens that are open, and the blue for handicap. And I have pictures and little videos of it because I just envision that in our own community and thinking, imagine being particularly, you know, you don't even have to go down the line if you can see all red, what it does, so I.
There's a local example of that.
Pardon?
El Comino Hospital, there, there's a garage at El Comino Hospital, one of the clinics in the back that has that, it's awesome.
Lovely.
You look right down the road and you can see a green way down there and just off you go.
Very progressive. Of course, Australia, Chelsea, they've been doing it for 20 years.
My last question is whether or not there are going to be any requirements for electric vehicles and charging stations?
So those are actually governed by the building code.
Okay.
So the, the design standards resolution does defer to that.
Okay.
And that is updated more regularly than these typically are.
Okay, thank you, that's the last of my questions. Any other commission questions for staff? Okay. Back to my cheat sheet. Let's go ahead and open this to public hearing. And are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on this item? Go ahead and, and join us at the podium and share your name and your street and your comments.
Thank you, Jack Verducci, I'm one of five co-owners of 692 El Comino Real. I have some questions and some comments to make. I tried to follow and it was a little hard to distinguish between the downtown and the rest of the city. So we're, are we in the, are we considered downtown or just transportation corridor property?
This parking chapter would apply citywide, but there's a specific area that we're also emphasizing.
Okay, so to go to a point you discussed a little earlier about net floor space, like deducting, like from the pizza example, is this going to be allowed in the commercial areas? For example, we have a client that has a gym and a certain amount of it is floor space is the actual gym and there's offices and sub-units in there that they use for regular business. Would we be able to deduct that from the total amount of square feet?
So I think we'd need to have floor plans and more details on whether or not those office uses are ancillary to the primary uses or if it really constitutes multiple uses on one property to make that determination. And I'll also point out that what we were discussing with exempting back-of-house areas only applies to restaurant uses.
Okay, so then it is a consideration. You take that into consideration then when we apply?
Are you proposing a restaurant?
No.
So we would take into consideration whether or not your, your proposed project has multiple uses, which would be different parking ratios for the office versus the gym? Or if the whole area would just be qualified as a gym if the offices are ancillary to that use?
Okay, understood. Then can you explain a little bit about the, so in page three, or page three, number 12, property owner is not required to remedy parking deficiencies existing prior to land use. Okay, what we have is an old car dealership and the parking requirements are fairly low. Does this mean that we can use that as a standard and just, or do we have to conform to the new standards?
If I understand correctly, so you're saying that if an existing parking requirement is less than the new use?
Yes.
We would look at the discrepancy between the two. So whatever you're proposing new versus what you have right now and then use the current proposed calculation to figure it out what your total requirement would be.
Okay.
Hi, Darcy Smith, City Community and Economic Development Director. It really depends, though, if you're keeping the existing buildings, just a qualification, so.
Yes, it's, it's just going to be, the interior is just going to be changed.
Okay, yeah, because if you were to scrape the entire existing buildings into a new project, then I guess the clock kind of resets and we recalculate if that makes sense for a brand-new building. Yes, I've seen head nines, okay, great. But the existing building is reused, then we look at the legal conforming use, which was an auto dealership, and then the new use and the kind of the delta, if you will, for calculation.
Hi, Peter Camerano, I work with Jack Verducci and the partners. The gym offices are ancillary to the gym. What would the answer be then?
So then the office uses would all be, the gym parking ratio, which is the health and fitness club land use, would apply to all the floor area of the whole building.
Okay, then I see there's the 25-foot, square foot exemption, that's just for downtown or is that, would we be eligible for that?
The 25,000 square feet exemption from a change of use is what you're referring to? So that is for the central business district? And the graphic here, I pulled it back up on the presentation, which you can see behind me, outlines where the central business district is. It's the red hatch area.
Okay, then there was another, I think there's a 10% requirement or reduction, is that, we be eligible for that?
That's for the transportation demand management plan and you would be eligible if you're in a specific plan area.
Okay.
Which is a larger area than what's shown on the screen right now.
Okay, and then I just want to make sure, because I know there's a little confusion in my mind between downtown and others, will the auto, auto stackers be, be able to use those in the commercial areas? Or is that just downtown?
Mechanical is citywide, but there are, I would encourage you to look at the proposed design guidelines because they do have to be screened and indoors. They can't just be outside exposed to the public view.
All right, can, all right. The cover over the top, is that sufficient, like a roof over them or?
Likely not, no.
Tandem parking, okay? If we have a valet parker, can we tandem park? I'll tell you what our problem is, we have a 1950's used property, very small parking lot, okay? About 75 by 80 or 50, whatever. Anyhow, we can certainly put in enough cars that we can tandem park them, but we wouldn't meet the spacing requirements. Being a car dealership, that wasn't an issue, you know, the cars are just parked, parked up, but we could probably get all the cars on that are needed if we can tandem park and have a valet assist.
And would the tandem parking spaces that you're proposing be for employee use or for customer use?
Both.
So it is allowed for employee use, but not for customer use?
Even with valet?
Even with valet. And it's possible that valet would be required for certain employee uses depending on how your site works and the city would make that decision after reviewing your application.
Since we're dealing with a 1950's building, is there any grandfather clause in there that we can get some help, be able to get this new business in there? With these parking rules, I mean, it's, it kind of.
So we would love to go through all your questions, but a better mechanism to do that would be to come in and meet with city staff. I think the purpose of tonight, well, but this is the first conversation we've had with the planning commission, for example, on the policies. And the purpose of the public comment isn't necessarily to go through all these questions order by order, it's to give the commission your comments and then they may not direct staff to answer any, your questions at that time, but to maybe just summarize that we'll offer to meet with you. But I want to emphasize, we, we worked on these regulations, it's the first time they're being shown to the public and it has to go through many more meetings before they're approved and.
Understand.
It would be probably the best opportunity to meet with staff individually.
Yeah, I didn't mean to get off into our own, our little world, but.
It was a helpful exercise, it was sort of what we.
It's a little frustrating because.
What if, what if this is a real-life case?
The property we've been vague, has vacancy for two years now?
Yes, we are aware of it.
And you're not doing anything until the parking regulations are approved, so we're kind of like locked out.
Yes, we have been aware of the need for these parking revisions for a while and I, I know the site and that you've had conversations with staff, so I think we would offer to meet with you and make ourselves available to go through these.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right.
Hi, Peter Camerano, I think I already introduced myself?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. I actually have some specific questions, I think they're general in nature. And I just wanted to say, I work with Jack a lot and I think this is the forum to ask questions. Maybe the specific questions not, but I think it's a good forum to ask questions as the public, that's all right. So, good job, Jack. What qualifies as a new development, would you say? Because I think you alluded to that in your description.
So I would kindly just request that you give all your comments to the planning commission and then they will direct staff on which ones to answer. And normally we do have a time limit, which we're not adhering to tonight, but usually folks have about three minutes to make their comments and questions and then the commission will direct us as to which questions we, they would like us to answer.
Thank you, so if you, if you could direct your comments and questions to us and then we can, we can reach out to staff.
Chairperson Lathan.
I'm sorry?
Chairperson Lathan.
Acting chair.
Acting chair, Lathan, very good. What qualifies as a new development under the parking requirements?
I think we'll need to bring staff in to clarify this, but I think it involves new construction, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, if we can hold all, if we can accept all the questions, we'll note them down and then you can let us know which ones you want answered at the very end. That would be how the normal public comments are made.
Okay, thank you, I apologize, this is really my first go-round.
Yeah, and interesting for me, the format before was different than it is right now, just making a note of that. CBD versus non-CBD, I would like to know an answer to what that really means. The central business district versus the non-central business district? We went through that pretty quick and I couldn't grasp all the data. There's a lot of data that you've been working on, I know for a while, I would like some more clarification about.
Okay, so we're, you're curious about what constitutes new development?
Yeah, first one would be what qualifies as new development.
Okay, and then what?
Simple question, because I think there were some qualifications on parking requirements for new development versus non-new development.
Correct.
Although I don't think that that was used, the non-new development, it was referred to as new development.
Right, or maybe existing versus?
Yeah, the requirements around that for sure.
Okay.
She might have, they might have reviewed it, but it was really too fast, I couldn't digest it.
Okay.
Quickly enough.
And then the, the area that constitutes the, the central business district within?
Yeah, versus non-CBD. I, I saw that there were a bunch of requirements comparing the parking proposed structures and I couldn't really balance them either because we went through them too fast, I just wanted to measure, so I understood what the CBD district is being allotted and what the non-CB district's being allotted from a parking requirement.
Okay.
Okay, and then my last question is just kind of in general in nature. Is the state of California running the parking requirement or is it just basically city-specific?
So the interface between state and city on the parking requirements?
Yeah, so who's driving the parking requirement? Because I know where I live, it's a little of both. The city drives a lot of it and also the state requires some things as well.
Okay, all right.
So I guess those are the questions that I have. How would I expect to get answers to those?
I think what I'd like to do is.
I'll take number two.
I'm sorry?
I can take number two.
Okay, great.
So what we learned, what we learned.
And I can sit down because I don't have any more questions. Because my time's almost up and I don't want to get yelled at.
You won't, you won't, it just, I have to apologize, this is my first time chairing a meeting like this and.
My first time talking to you guys.
Okay, so we're first timing it together. So I, for Robert's rules, it's just. So for Robert's rules, it's just for keeping order, I suppose.
Yeah, reasonable.
So this is very in order. You beeped in everything.
Please turn that off.
Jerry, beep it, beep it. Okay.
So for the Central Business District, so what we learned, what we learned tonight is that the, what we, the, that there were different rules and more relaxed rules developed on purpose to encourage down, to encourage new businesses downtown in the Central Business District.
And that's the San Mateo.
San Mateo Avenue. It's on the screen.
Right, yeah.
The hatched area there. And that, but not to every building in that area, to buildings built after 2005.
Correct.
And because the buildings built up to that point, or buildings built prior to 2005 have been paying into a fund for parking.
They've paid their dues.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, for example, when I brought up later, when we were talking about the aperture, they don't count. They don't, that building doesn't, would not fall into this because it was just built, you know, three years ago. So, or just opened a year ago. So, and then regarding what the specific differences are, you know, it's here up on the screen that the first 2,500 square feet of floor space is not counted when counting up the parking requirement for buildings. This is in the CBD, that's what's on the screen. Exactly. And then what we were seeing, the numbers go by, were examples of what that would look like in a few use cases. And if you could bring up one of those...
Yeah, I don't need those examples. I just, yeah, that's fine. That's minutia that doesn't help really.
Okay, but does that answer your question?
Yeah, that does. And then the non-CBD would be everything else.
Yes.
The rest of the city.
If you, if you want a somewhat simpler and clearer map, if you do, you can download the Transit Corridors Plan from the city website. It's on the planning site or, aha, look. And yeah, it's one of the, one of the first maps in it.
So that's, that's everything we've discussed tonight.
No, this is, if you just wanted just to get the map of where the Central District, how the Central, Central Business District is defined, it is, there's a very clear map. It's on page 23 as numbered or 33 in the PDF. Yep, yeah, that's what I have on my screen right now. And yeah, the property that we were discussing earlier is a little too far north to be in the CBD. The CBD does include some frontage on El Camino.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
But it's only...
That's the other reason I'm asking the question. So very astute of you.
Yeah, the furthest north property is basically the IHOP just south of Angus.
Yeah. Which, okay.
Okay.
Thank you for that. That's helpful and I will go download that. And as it relates to the qualifier for new development or not, what is, is that rip-down, build new or is it remodel?
Right. My understanding, and I think I'd love staff to jump in, but my understanding is redevelopment typically involves the removal of an existing building and building new, but perhaps that is a very limited understanding.
It generally pertains to demolition of 50% or more of existing walls. That would constitute new development versus an addition to an existing structure.
Exterior.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's the rule. Okay, that makes good sense.
Yeah, and then your last question is another question that I was interested in learning more about too, and that was how does the, how do the parking requirements from the state interface with our parking requirements in the city?
So...
Can I look at them?
Of course.
I don't want to get in trouble.
I mentioned the state regulations as they relate to multifamily residential parking and as they relate to accessory dwelling units. And these are the two areas where the state has gotten involved in regulating parking.
Multifamily and accessory dwellings.
Accessory dwelling units.
Otherwise, it doesn't apply.
Hmm.
For commercial, I guess, is the question.
For, yeah, for commercial, for the commercial, for the most part, it's all locally controlled. There may be some like hospital examples or something.
One-offs.
Yeah, that there could be one, but in general, like commercial, retail, those are all locally controlled parking standards.
So it's basically directed towards affordable housing and multi-units. That's what it's, the state's directing.
You got it.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you very much for answering my question.
Thank you for coming along with us.
My pleasure.
Okay. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak on this item? Okay. I see no more, so I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the Planning Commission for any further questions or points of discussion.
When we're ready, I would very much like to introduce this one.
I actually did want to simply add another point to be included in the study session as we move forwards with this. The topic that was brought up of in a space like this, you know, former auto business, being able to provide a valet to condense the parking for customers. I mean, I've been to businesses where you valeted your car and, I mean, I don't know, it's not a big deal. Certainly up in San Francisco, where parking is much harder to come by. It's an efficient way to do things. And I wonder if we could consider adjusting the ordinance to allow all parking on a site like this to be valeted. Obviously not a topic of vote here, but something to submit into the study session.
We'll definitely include that in the comment.
Right, thank you. Any other comments before I invite Commissioner Hamilton to introduce a motion?
Nope.
No resolution? Okay.
All right. I am thrilled to move that we adopt the resolution recommending the city council adopt the ordinance rescinding and replacing San Bruno Municipal Code, Chapter 12.100, and amending Chapter 12.92 and 12, Chapter 12.96, and recommending that the city council adapt, adopt the draft resolution with the parking design standards, and also recommend that the comments that we included be passed along for the study session.
I will second that.
If I may, I think this is a roll call vote.
Okay. Please, please comment.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Chair Lathan?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The motion passes. Okay. So we will move on from our items of business to items of, items from staff. And our first item from staff is the election of a chair and a vice chair.
Yes. Yes, we would like to have an election for the 2020 Planning Commission Chair and also the Vice Chair, if I can have one of the Planning Commission to make a nomination.
Through the chair. I would like to nominate Kelly Lathan for Chair of our Planning Commission for the 2020 year.
I second that.
Okay. Do we need, do we do, we do a vote?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That was easy. And then I'll move on to the Vice Chair. Just a informational item, I was advised by city attorney that we could also nominate people who are not in our audience tonight. So we had an opportunity to talk to Commissioner Biassadi and so he's also interested and also will be willing to if a nomination is made. Just throw that out, put it out there.
I'd like to go ahead and nominate Vice Chair Biassadi.
I second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Hopefully it'll smooth out a little bit as we go. Thank you.
The next item is that I want to bring to your attention, we'll be making a annual presentation to the city council. The date scheduled for now is January 14 and we'll be in touch with Chair to finalize the presentation before that happens.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Next item, we would like to get a, well, get three volunteers for the next January 20, actually, it's going to be January 16, so the date isn't accurate. So the next ARC meeting is January 16 for the ARC members. I had a, I had surveyed planners today to see how many projects that we are looking for, given the holiday schedule, just want to kind of get a sense. At this point, we're not anticipating to have any project ready for that month, but we would like to have volunteers available just in case that we have a project available. So this, right now, we don't have anything ready, but there might be something else coming. We will definitely have a February ARC, so if I can have three volunteers for the January ARC meeting and with possibly two backups.
Through the...
I see Commissioner Harmon?
I'll do it.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Yes, Commissioner Johnson?
It's okay, I'll hold.
You'll hold, okay.
Commissioner Johnson as well?
No, through, since the day changed, I no longer...
Yeah.
I just wanted to verify, we're talking about January 16th and what is the hour?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. I'm looking for the third volunteer.
I can volunteer.
Okay, thank you. And then I'll know Commissioner Morgan can be the backup?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't have any other items to report out.
Okay, very good. All right, then we'll bring it back to the second public comment section. Are there any more, any more members of the public who'd like to speak on an item that was not on the agenda tonight?
Through the chair, hold that man down.
But you can talk about another topic if you like.
You get three more minutes.
I don't know. I'm just going to the holidays, I don't know.
Okay. All right, as I see no one else who would like to share, we'll go ahead and move on. Items from members and subcommittee reports. Do we have any reports to share? Trainings, meetings that have been attended that you'd like to share about? Okay.
I went to the, to the Planning Commission training in October. It's my third, my third session there at the San Mateo Library. Highly recommended. Every session has been great.